Okay, let the records reflect the members that are here this evening. And first thing is review of the approval minutes. Questions or comments on the minutes? I didn't have any issues, so I'll entertain a motion. Second, second by Barry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Jim. I counted all of them. Okay, the first item on the list here is the concept plan presentation of the Tony Town Public Works facility, so Jim, do you want to introduce?
Morton Buildings and Land Works. Randy Myers, our water superintendent and assistant director of public works is going to kick it off with introductions.
I'm Randy Myers, assistant director of public works. Just so everyone's aware, we're taking seven buildings and putting in this one building and getting rid of some buildings that nothing fits anymore. Like, we've outgrown those because the city keeps growing.
Two buildings?
It's going to be two buildings. One will be one build, one will be the building, the other one will be a salt barn. So it's really not, won't be nothing in there except for salt, so. Corey and Kyle from Morton Buildings is going to take it from here. We spent a good year of like dialing it all in, so hopefully you guys enjoy the presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right. You're welcome to sit down or stand, whatever you guys wanted to do. Try to get kind of close to the mic if you would. You can slide it closer if you need to.
All right, and we've got a couple things that we're going to pull up here with the laptops, so I think we should be...
I'm sorry, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sorry. Kyle Mantua with Morton Buildings, area manager.
Corey Groves, sales rep for Morton Buildings.
Like Randy was saying, we've been working together with Jim and Randy and various other members with the town for quite a while now. So, the first thing, like Randy had said, we went through and really the biggest chunk that went into the design of the process from the first initial concept and to what we have now was figuring out how many vehicles are in these seven other buildings, what kind of trucks are needed, what kind of growth and potential there could be for future use as well. So, we really took a lot of that and really tried to scale the building to hopefully be able to be used and also be grown into for many years. And like Randy was saying, I know we talked a lot about some of the other buildings, you know, the original garage door openings that were, you know, sufficient 30 years ago. Trucks don't quite fit in them anymore. Things are getting bigger. Equipment's getting bigger. I know, like you talked about the fire department, there's, everything's getting bigger. So, the goal was to be able to house everything in one building. So, the first slide that we do have here, this is a set of the plans to just show some elevations. We have a couple other things that we can, we can go into as well. Hopefully there's some questions and we have everything, we'll be able to kind of pull up and answer for you guys. But just to give a more of a understanding of what we're looking at, this is the initial elevation drawings of the building. So we've got a couple different iterations of it, but this is, this is where we came to after sizing vehicles, what kind of workspace was going to be needed, even down to storage of chemicals for chlorine for the water treatment. We have a separate room that's rated in per code, everything, how many cylinders will be stored in that room. So, really trying to get everything into, into, into one initial building. I think probably what would be the most beneficial, we do have a quick little brief video that actually flies around through the building, colors more than just like a sketched elevation drawing, so we'll play that real quick. There's no sound to it. But everything is to scale, so it's, it's pretty accurate.
Oh, did I, I closed, I closed my phone. I apologize.
So this room, I'm going to probably end up pausing maybe one or two times, but this room right here, what we originally had met, Randy had talked about us with training for all the various different departments, the police department, everybody, fire department that, that use, I believe you said you guys currently use the building next door. But this would be able to house much bigger groups, larger classes. Seating, what we were trying to kind of go off of all the departments you guys have.
That there was just like a resting room, because when the guys are out plowing, we have nowhere to take an hour break. They either bundle up in their truck, or sit in the corner, or sit in a room that doesn't have heat. So it's, we're trying to accommodate everything. And that classroom is 40, I think it was 40 seats?
Forty seats.
And I took my first state test on a chair right here. You know how embarrassing that is? Yeah?
You've never done that.
So then would that training space have different furniture? Because right now those people were filling out their tests on their knee.
That was just for the rendering.
Okay.
Forty seats is more than we have at the police station conference room, training
Pretty standard break room. And this is where I was saying how we tried to really size vehicles, equipment, even though there's so much more equipment that's obviously not shown here, but the main thing was get equipment in there, a welding station where you could have a lift, where vehicles would be staged, having plows in front of the trucks for the winter time, having everything inside, having an area for hoppers to be loaded in the truck, dump trucks, you know, as far as your salt trucks, things of that nature. And then obviously, you know, a couple pieces of equipment, you know, are shown in here too. But obviously, there's a lot, lot more equipment out in the field. The main thing is just kind of get that visual to kind of see what, what the building would actually look like, how everything would be staged, windows, doors, entries. You know, this doesn't show the salt barn. That's a pretty, pretty basic building, just open, open front, off to the back. But essentially, at the end of the day, what you'd be looking at is similar to what we have on the screen right here. So, we're looking at a full, you know, design, build, turnkey, down front to the handicap parking spaces, to fixtures and everything, break rooms, cabinetry, you know, drywall, paint, the whole nine yards. That's, that's kind of gives you the visual what, what the concept is right now, what we're, what we came to based off of the needs of all the existing buildings.
On a daily basis, at least 10. I mean, we're, this, when we talked about heat and air conditioning, everything like that, we cut everything way back because our guys aren't in there all day long. Like, they're out moving. Obviously, we have to have air conditioner, heat, we have classes, you know. But there's also the state of the art chlorine storage room, which is a good thing. And then there's a backup IT room in this building for the whole city. And there's also a record storage for the ladies here in the office, because right now we have it in two different spots. This way, it's all on one floor, we build shelves, because we have to keep the records for so long.
You have 10 employees, what'd you say? Okay.
Why are we storing chemicals here as opposed to where water treatment is?
We have them at, we have to have spares.
Okay.
And we actually have two at each water treatment area, at each well.
Okay.
So, we keep 10 on hand at all times.
Okay, right, just, it, it just seems like we have a special room that has to have special stuff.
We have a special room now, it's just dated.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, but like, why, I'm just curious, why, why we wouldn't expand near water treatment as opposed to keeping stuff here?
Well, actually, most of the places don't have enough room to do that. I'd love to take you on a tour.
I'm working on it, but work, work tends to overlap what you guys do.
I got you on Saturday, but whenever you're, whenever you're ready.
We'll figure it out, man.
Yep. Okay.
That would answer a lot of your questions.
What's, what's the current, what's the current schedule for training space? How often is that used?
There is no dedicated training space for public works.
I understand that, but what, so what is the current training schedule then, I should say, for, for the, the conference room over at, over at police?
There's, it's, it's not booked that frequently. A lot of the trainings that, that the guys do are, they do a lot of online training, they travel for training a lot as well. When we have a, a class, when we have more than, more than a couple people trying to do a training at once, we'll often use the council chamber. You know, I think we did some water training and the guys had to take samples in the lunchroom.
Yeah, also, some of the training is, you have to bring pipes and, you know, and there's just no room in the police station. And they like to do at least 30, and we're not going to make that happen at the police station. And it's, if we can, we have a place, they'll come do it for free, it doesn't cost the city anything. Maryland Roll Water will come here and put the classes on. And the guys need to have the classes for their state license.
Do you have annual researchs and stuff like that?
It's every three years, we have to have so many credits. It's like 16, and then the sewer plant's like 40, so there is some time involved. Some classes are only four hours, some classes are only three. So we try to send them to the eight-hour classes, and that also gets them out of town for eight hours, which then that makes it short. If we can get something here, if something happens, we work with the instructor and make it, make it work.
You guys have more to, I have a few questions, I was just going to wait till you guys are done talking there.
We're just getting into the site plan part.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Keep on going, yeah.
Yes, yeah, we've already worked with the civil engineering companies, site plan, stormwater management, everything's already been started. So we've, we've got a lot of, really, movement over the last about two years now, just between figuring out what kind of stormwater management's going to be needed. The property obviously is going to suffice, and we have enough room where the, where the hookups are going to be for utilities as far as water, sewer, all of that. So, we, we've pretty much got everything to the point now where we're in concept phase, but really, we're kind of past the initial concept, all the discovery. So it's, it's still concept, but we're really towards the tail end of it. A lot of the, a lot of the legwork's already been done, and a lot of the talks with the county as far as the permitting, what's going to be needed, everything like that's been figured out. We've gone through code review, we've got full mechanicals, pretty much done as far as all the HVAC, electrical, everything, the code, architectural reviews been done. You know, like I said, even down to the parking spaces, what's going to be needed. Sorry. And, yeah, so conceptual, but we're really towards the tail end of it. You know, as far as with projects like this, the hardest thing is a lot of the time just going through the, the stages to find out what can actually be done and what the county's going to allow you to do, and, you know, what's available, and what the land looks like, and making sure it can happen. So, we really covered a lot of that so far.
You have enough parking considering you have a classroom for 40 people? Because when you do your state classes, everybody in the state's invited, plus your employees, do you have that much parking here?
Over 48 spaces.
Too short there, there.
Actually, my question was, the other is, why do we have so many parking?
Well, when the other state classes, they will need it.
With the training classes, usually guys will carpool, you know, multiple people from one jurisdiction will pile in one truck, and, you know, not everybody drives their own vehicle for training, when we do have trainings with other municipalities.
Also, our guys will, if we have to, we can put our vehicles inside the shop during that day, our personal vehicles, which is not, not a problem. But there should be more, more than sufficient parking with that, with a 40-person class.
Yeah, and my question was only was, how did, how did you determine the 48? I mean, I didn't know.
I think we went with, we went with 40, we did the 40 for the class, eight and two of our guys take the trucks home. They don't have a personal vehicle there, because they're on call 24/7, 365.
Is your 48 including your handicap, or are handicaps separate? Because you need 48 plus two handicaps, I believe.
Yeah, I'd have to, so we've done this and we've redone it about three times. So, what we have currently and what, what it is with or without the handicap stalls, I'd have to recount that.
Okay.
But we can provide it, yeah.
Yeah, 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 we can get you all of that information.
I noticed in this view here, it shows the front sidewalk. I'm not sure if, maybe I've misread it before in this, in the earlier plan, was it shown in, in the earlier plan? Maybe not. You're going to have a sidewalk the way it looks.
Right, yeah, the civil plans will have it, the, the actual, if, depending on which ones that you're looking at, the construction plans aren't going to show it. That'll show you the elevations, most of the, you know, show where handicap spots have to be and how many are required. But the civil drawing, that'll have everything on the exterior of the building. I think, okay.
I notice your square footage changed about a little bit, too, I think. Is that what it was? Was that the, anyway. But 111 times, I guess you round, is that typically you just round it off or round it up?
What's that, I'm sorry?
111 times 190 is not two, whatever you had on there. Do you want, 21?
21, it's, yeah, it's plus or minus 21.
Okay.
Depending on wall finishes, yeah.
Yeah, I was just, the 111 times 190 doesn't equal that, that's what I'm saying.
Right. Yep.
Just to clarify, the 48 does include the two handicaps.
You guys, you want to continue, or?
Yeah, I don't, I'm more, I'm really looking to see, getting other questions that you guys might have.
Got a few.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be, yeah, we'd let you guys kind of drive it with questions and, and hopefully we can answer them all.
All right. You guys good?
Go ahead.
All right.
I'll feel when you get done.
Yeah. Okay, so we talked, the square footage, we talked about that, the 48 spaces, we talked about that. I noticed in your elevation view, you didn't have the elevation of the buildings, so do you know how tall they're going to be?
To medium height or peak height? You're looking for like the overall peak height of the building?
I just didn't see it listed there. I'm sure you have it. So while you're looking at that...
That'll be a comment on the, on the site plan to add.
Yeah.
Add callouts for the building dimensions and how you...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine, yeah, we can just make sure we get added, that's fine.
And I, as was brought up earlier, you know, we're technically at the concept stage, but the drawings that you guys got last month are obviously far more developed than your typical concept plan.
Yeah.
But officially, we are at the concept stage, so we still have plenty of time to add.
So, actually start this, or?
No, no, so as we move through the site plan process, we, we need to be aware of, you know, the timelines, because we don't want to rush through the approval process and have a set of approved plans, and then have that approval expire before we end up getting the green light to... There's a lot of concern at the council level about the cost of it.
It's a tax priority, too.
So, I mean, it, it is expensive, you know, no doubt.
But Jim, go ahead.
But there was, you know, we, we did demonstrate that we could use the Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Financing Program for a low-interest loan through MBE, and that we could accommodate that within the budget this year without any tax increase, that we could meet the debt service with the way finances were. But the mayor had some different ideas on how to, you know, direct spending. So he, you know, directed that we take that out and we put in two new staff positions instead. So with that, there wasn't any room.
Well, but two staff positions doesn't equal eight million.
No, no, I'm talking about the debt service for a year.
Okay.
I'll take one more position, so.
Right. So, so basically, you know, with, with borrowing and putting down, you know, some money from fund balance from the city's savings, you know, we were able to make the numbers work to be able to make the loan payments to do it. But, you know, the mayor and council have kind of put us on, on hold with it for the time being. So as far as when we want to start, kind of an open-ended question right now.
So, a lot of things could change, Jim. County codes and different things change by then.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
But so on the process here, so where we're at on the process, I mean, we're not voting on the concept plan tonight.
Not tonight, right, that'll be next month.
So, so this, we have the presentation here, then that, you know, we, everything's okay, right? You go and do your investigation, we have copies that you send to everybody in the county. We get all that information back maybe next month at the earliest, and that's when, at that presentation, we would have the opportunity to vote on the concept plan.
Well, at the concept plan, technically, there's no, there's no technical reviews for us at the concept level. Usually, that's, that's basically the site plan that was up on the screen. You know, it shows you where the ingress egress is going to be, where the building is, where the parking is, you know, maybe where the storm management is. That's usually what we approve as a concept plan.
Well...
This is like way more developed than that.
That the zoning administrators will complete a study, so that's, that's the study you're talking about, right? Okay. I'm, I'm good, yeah.
Now, will this building require sidewalk out to the main street, or?
I mean, to meet our own, you know, goals and objectives, we should put sidewalk in front of the building along Allen Dale Lane for the part of the road that we're going to improve with the project. But that sidewalk's probably going to terminate at the end of the city property at this point.
Where is this?
Allen Dale Lane across the railroad tracks.
Because I'm looking at, I'm looking at Allen Dale Lane.
See it on your tour. It's Saturday, your tour.
It's, it's behind, if you know where Duffy Box and Recycling is on Frederick Street, it's, it's behind that.
Okay, so, so Allen Dale Lane is different from what Google says Allen Dale Lane is?
You pass the道口 until you hit the T section, the T, turn left.
Yeah, turn left, okay, yeah, good. It's got Allen Dale Lane as going to 194.
And it does, and then it, after it crosses the tracks, it makes like a pretty much 90-degree turn and runs parallel to the tracks.
Going left.
Okay.
Okay. So, so I mean, your, your update out on the plans, I'm sure.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll get it, I'll get it.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know why it's not showed on there, but we'll, we'll get it over to you guys, that's not an issue.
I mean, I think, I think we need to know that number to say, to check the block, so we need to know where it is.
And not, again, not necessarily for concept.
Right, not for concept.
Right.
Right, but eventually.
Yes, right.
Now I see it.
So the, with the, I saw the salt bin in the back, the backside there, back right there. So, are there requirements that you have to have any kind of like protection for runoff from a salt bin or anything, you know, like?
As, not that I'm aware of. I know we did, our architects and everybody looked into, we, we have built a good bit of them. The biggest thing is the structure itself and the blocking of the wall and everything for the salt, that's the biggest thing.
So it'd be blocked so far?
But everything's inside the building and covered, overhangs, gutters, so nothing's exposed to the elements. So I don't believe there is any...
I would imagine that'd be, the county would note that anyway when we got to that stage, so, I was just curious.
Is there a reason why you couldn't go out to county and get your salt instead of maintaining it yourself?
Where would you like us to drive in the county to get the salt?
Get right up here to Frederick County.
Well, that's Frederick County. We have, we have, we have a backup plan with the state. We have a salt barn now, which barely does one round of the whole city, but then we have to get a truck in. And also, in the future, we're going to have to do brine, that nasty word, brine, that nobody likes, it's coming. And we need to have a place to have it stored. So that's kind of why that building's so big for the future. We're already planning on running the pipes out there, the conduits out there, so all we have to do is just pull the water, the electric, you know, we're trying to...
Plan ahead.
Future-proof it, so.
I was with Carroll County School Board's 30 years maintenance. We did not have our own salt. We always went to the county, because we, they didn't want the responsibility or the maintenance involved in that.
Yeah, well, I mean, only, only problem we have with our salt barn now is it's too small.
Okay.
That's, that's it. We can't...
And Bridgeport's too far to go to get it?
We have to have a, we have a backup contract for emergency use only for that, for the state, because technically, that's Frederick County.
I understand it is.
I mean, you know how that goes.
Wait, dude, the bridge, yeah.
On the other side of the bridge, on the other side of the river.
Yeah, it's close enough. But yeah, we, we get our salt from the county, we have a contractor haul it in to get the county price, the save, for the savings. But to run our pickup trucks down there for a scoop and a half, pack and a bucket scoop and a half, and come back up here, instead of taking four hours, we've got 12 hours in it then, so, better to have your own. But we, on the, on the salt barn, we did do concrete walls up so far, and when we, they built the salt barn, I'm not sure when they did that, Jim, years ago, they didn't seal it, you know, we, we have a plan to, to box it in so no salt runs down behind the metal, and, you know, we, we really tried to do everything. And the eight million price is scary, but like we said before, if you go to the fire service, everything's expensive. If we wait two or three more years, it's going to be 10 million.
It's going to go down.
Yeah. We're having that trouble right now with the wrecked building. It's, it's went up, you know, so.
So, another question I had, I get, and I'm not sure whether it should be in these plans or not, like, Allen Dale Lane, are we planning on resurfing that and resurfacing it in front of, I mean, because it's gravel now, right?
Ours, in front of our property will be redone.
Yeah. I'm not sure if that would typically show in these plans or not, just, was it?
Yeah, the, the civil plans. Right where it turns gray is right where it turns to gravel.
Yeah, but, but you're going to, that's going to be resurfaced.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I guess my last question is, are you going to have a sign or anything that says, hey, Tony Town Public Works?
Unfortunately, Darrell and I were working on that, and we all know what happened there. So, we, and I've talked to Jim, we want to make it a nice, trying to come up with a nice design to put on there that says, Tony Town DPW, the address. Hopefully, we'll have that figured out before we come back the next time.
Okay.
With a nice, I want to give you guys a drawing so you can actually see it with the size.
I think the advantage... I think the advantage is if, if you have it in these plans, you don't have to do another one later, so.
Yeah, we, we just never got to that point. We were working on all the other stuff.
Our architects have a pretty good program that they put together. We will work with you guys for the sign to get, you know, figure out what drawings, what it, what we want it to look like, get with a local printer and have something nice, big, visible that, that, you know, to scale so people can see.
Also, I guess on the sign, we, Jim and I had a discussion, do we put it in a building or put a nice little, we were trying to discuss that in-house and then everybody got busy, you know, so.
Understand, yeah.
We just want to make sure it's easily visible and identifiable from the road. So whether it ends up being a monument sign closer to the road or, you know, signage on the building itself.
Makes sense.
If it's closer to the road, it can be smaller and still be legible. So that may be the way to go.
Yep. That was all the questions I had. Barry, any, anything else?
I got one more. How phaseable would this be if it needs to get broken up? Well, I, it all depends on really, by fa, it's kind of a loaded question. I would say very, very phaseable. You know, everything's done in sections. All the rooms can be done in, in time and the salt barn could be separate. You know, with phasing, the only thing with phasing, right, you're, you're mobilizing more back and forth. I mean, but it is doable. So depending on code and requirements, that's the only thing. We want to make sure that you can get occupancy and you can get everything done. So more than likely, wall finishes, insulated, lockable shell, pretty much for the most part, heated, cooled plumbing, everything would be done. Your finishes are usually where you can kind of make some differences in phasing. Some of the rooms and how you finish off the rooms, maybe you don't finish all the rooms off right away, but you get the square footage you need to ensure you have that down the road when you need to finish a room, if it's going to be an office or for storage or what it might be. You know, so with the site plan, you know, you're, you want to make sure the site plan is for the end, end, end project, you know, the end goal. Because you want to have the sufficient stormwater management, retention pond, everything that's going to, you know, take care of all the, all the runoff, the parking lot, both buildings. If that's, you know, so that's, that's the big part of it. Civil design, you want to make sure you're going to end goal and, and completing everything to that, that design.
Any, any comments or questions from the, from the audience?
We'll, we'll revisit this next month and be looking for a concept plan approval. I know that county agencies are already reviewing it.
Right.
We've already gotten some comment letters back on it. So that's already in the works. But, and this is a, a good candidate that since there's no subdivision of land or, you know, new streets or anything like that being built, this is one where the, where the code gives us the opportunity to go from concept right to the final site plan without going through the preliminary. Because as you know, our preliminary plan and our final plan are one in the same unless the planning commission directs something additional to be added, which typically doesn't happen. And that's why we often end up giving preliminary and final site plan in the same month. So, you know, this is an opportunity to go right to final, and we can talk about that more next month.
Will, will we get another packet or?
Yeah. So, so if, if the comments result in anything substantive changing on the plan, I think we would get a new plan set to you guys. If it's still going to look 90% like it does, we're probably not going to give you a whole new set of plans. You know, maybe if there's like a couple of sheets that, you know, have substantial revisions, you know, those we could, you know, append into the other set. But I kind of hate to, you know, give you guys another stack of paper that big if, if it's going to look, you know, 98% like the one that you got.
No, no worries.
Can I get one?
Yes.
And.
I may, catch me before we leave. I might have an extra copy down in Daryl's office.
Okay.
Chris has it, has your cover.
See, I wasn't, I wasn't going to go there. I wasn't going to say, hey, Chris, come on, give me a, but.
I might still have it on my desk, Gary, so if I do, I'll bring it over.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. I, I think we're pretty good. I appreciate you guys' time and.
And if I could just, one more thing too, just a little bit more about, you know, Morton Buildings in general, I, I didn't really touch on, you know, as a company, and I, I know we're pretty well-known in the area, but not everybody knows a lot about us. You know, we, we've been around 122 years at this point as a company. We have a full design build team. A lot of the reason we were able to get so much done so quickly on this one is because we have all the partnerships, local subcontractors that we work with, our manufacturing plants right in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. So if you ever have anybody that wants to come and do a tour of our facility, see the trusses being built, roll the steel, you know, we, we do it all the time. We, and we love to have people there. You know, so everything is, is local for the most part. As far as the subcontracting, we're not using companies that are the lowest bidder. We're not, we're not shooting it out and just, and trying to, you know, just, like I said, find the lowest bidder. We're, Fern Rocky, we've worked with for years. They're a local, local company in the community. That's who we'd be using for our electric. You know, MTM Plumbing is right in Mount Airy. You know, there's a lot of other companies that, that are local that we use. Even though we are a, a large company, we're a nationwide company, each location is, it's, it's kind of its own business and within the, the branch of Morton Buildings. So like I said, with us being so close to Gettysburg here, the plant, the distributing, all of our employees that construct are Morton employees. We don't subcontract out any of our construction. We don't, even down to our tractor trailer drivers, delivering the material are Morton Buildings employees. We're an employee-owned company. Mostly about 99% of our product is American. We've got some fasteners and things. But for the most part, everything is within the US. So I just, you know, I always like to let everybody know that. You know, we lose, use a little bit thicker gauge steel. We've got a phenomenal warranty. We manufacture our material, so the warranty's through us. We're not, you know, having to call the manufacturer of the metal. We're not having to worry about a company going out of business if there is an issue down the road. You know, if the, if there's an issue, the plant's 30 minutes away, so.
Hey, see, as a plan, I think it's a good plan and I like it. But as a taxpayer, I'm not happy with this.
Okay, very good. Thanks again.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate everybody's time.
Randy, thanks for coming.
I was going to say, because, yeah, I want to talk to you about.
Okay. Next item on the list was ordinance and grievance for review. So nothing there?
Nothing this month on that, nope.
And then planning and zoning reports are.
Okay. So this month, I wanted to kind of touch on, a bit of an overview on the water resources element update that, that's been ongoing at the, at the county level. So this is countywide, but the effort has involved all the municipalities. And the idea is that everyone will adopt the county element to update their comprehensive plans with that element. And for us, you know, if we're able to, you know, the, the goal is to coordinate with Arrow Castle Valley Consultants, with, you know, Craig and Emily, to try to sort of blend the two or figure out, you know, make sure that they coordinate. So we may be able to say a little bit more specific to Tonny Town in hours and then still incorporate the countywide water resources element by reference. So the idea really is that countywide, you know, we're, we're being consistent throughout the municipalities and, and really looking at water resources at, at a broader level than each town, kind of doing their own thing. So kind of trying to hit a, a balance between, you know, nobody wants to give up their autonomy, but at the same time, the county's resources are so much stronger than ours when it comes to the regulations and the state. That's why we're on a joint stormwater permit with the county and all the other municipalities, because we really couldn't do it, you know, individually as eight separate towns. So this is just a, a quick overview. We start out with the drinking water supply. And, and I will get the, the full document to you guys. It's, it's very lengthy and we might want to kind of digest it over the period of a couple of months. But this is just a quick overview of what's, what's going on with it. So basically, after all the number crunching, the county planning department has determined that, you know, there is, there is adequate water within Carroll County to support the planned growth. When you look across everybody's comprehensive plans, including the counties. Now, bringing that to fruition may be a challenge because, you know, we may have to talk about reservoirs and things like that, which are difficult in today's world. But as far as the water that can be utilized within the county, there is enough water to, to meet the, the ultimate demands. So with the towns on this slide, Hampstead, Manchester, Mount Airy, Tonny Town, Westminster, you know, we would need additional capacity developed to reach our, our full buildout for the water service area. Buildout and the, the numbers are based on the buildable land inventory. So for the zoning of the parcel, there's a, you know, a planning number used for how many units can go on an acre in R10,000, in R70,000, R20, and so on throughout the county. So they look at the, you know, the potential lot yield of all the undeveloped parcels, and that's where they come up with this buildable land inventory and how many houses we need to plan for eventually.
Is this, is this reflected in those extra areas that they were talking about on the water that we were looking at on the comprehensive plan last week? Okay.
And that's, that's something that we're going to talk a little bit more about and maybe when we get to the old business part. There, because I know we've been kind of kicking around what was talked about the previous Tuesday, you know, when we meet Monday a little bit. So we can, we can delve into that a little bit more farther down the agenda if that's all right. So one notable thing here on this slide, Westminster's Pure Water Reuse Plant, you've probably read about it in the paper. It's an indirect water reuse where they have used membrane technology at their wastewater plant or at a, they did a pilot program with a temporary filtration system, demonstrated to the Department of the Environment that they could, you know, clean this wastewater to the point that it could become potable water. The state is not at the point where they will permit direct reuse. So what Westminster needs to do is they put this new filtered water from their, their treatment plant back into the cranberry reservoir where it actually gets dirtier. And then they need to draw it and re, re-filter it. But that's, that's the best the state would do with it.
It's the same state that won't build power plants.
So basically, it's cleaner when it goes into the reservoir than when it, you know, comes back out as, as raw water again. But that technology is now, you know, has now been approved by the state on a pilot basis. But Westminster is, has been permitted to build the permanent facility now. So that is something that may be in other municipalities' future, such as ourselves, that if the technology for wastewater treatment doesn't change dramatically, we're going to be at the limit of technology and the limit of what our receiving waters can accommodate. So that, that, you know, additional membrane filtration, while it's costly, you know, may ultimately be how municipalities that rely on groundwater grow. And of course, we're all constrained by nutrient levels, but I'm, I'm switching more to the wastewater piece at this point. But the idea here is that you can use, you know, the technology exists to use wastewater, recirculate it back through your system so that you're not having to, you know, it, it makes it a partially closed system then. So you're putting water back into your own aquifer or back into your own reservoir. So it's definitely something to keep an eye on. So, you know, the smaller towns have some more limitations than, than we do, you know, mostly with funding. But.
So when the county determines that we have enough water for our buildout, you know, they, they make an assumption on how many houses we're going to have. So I guess, I assume they're making assumptions on how much recharge area there's going to be available in the future too? Or is it, is it just like a snapshot in time? This is what we got now and?
This is, this is looking to the future based on, you know, a multitude of factors, including groundwater recharge rates, you know, where, where there's going to be development, where there's not. Now, this is just, at this point, like a numbers exercise. You know, if there were, say, the, the, what was it, Gillis Falls and, and I want to say Union Mills, you know, concept ideas for reservoirs, you know, they may never get off the ground.
They've been talking about, I've lived down there. They've been talking about Gillis Falls as long as they've been talking about the bypass.
Right, and it, right. It may not ever happen. So the, the mathematical exercise is basically, you know, there is water that could support it. But whether we can develop those sources in order to support it is another question. So.
Yeah, seems.
So the, the next slide here just kind of runs through the different, different water service areas. And these figures are, are a little bit dated at this point because there had to be a, a stopping point to collect all the data. So, you know, on the water side, not much has changed for us because we haven't gotten additional appropriation permits.
What's the minus mean?
So that's how much more water we would need to develop to, to meet the buildout on our current comprehensive plan. And that includes that large growth area.
And the appropriations with the air pointing up, that just means that?
To increase our appropriation.
Oh.
Right. And we can't do that without recharge.
Gotcha.
That's our, that's our limiting factor right now.
Understood.
So just some general strategies. Obviously, just like we say in our water resource element, you know, we're going to protect our, our existing drinking water supplies, our wellhead protection areas, all that. Identify new water supplies to support planned growth without overallocating. So we have our adequate public facilities ordinances that, you know, if we can't demonstrate that we can provide the water and sewer capacity, or that we have a plan to do it within X number of years, we can't approve developments.
With that in mind, it'd probably be better if we went with single-family homes because we'd use, we'd have more recharge area and use less water than going to all these row homes that we have a habit of doing. Less density.
So, right. So in, in some regards, you are, you are correct. You know, less density means less demand. You know, but, but there are also infrastructure costs to factor into.
You've got more bright put-down, yeah.
Right. And, and ultimately, you know, it will be up to this body as well as the mayor and council to, you know, to set up those parameters, you know, in the next plan. You know, this body will, will approve a final plan and transmit it to the mayor and council, who will then have the opportunity to review it and, and make comments back, you know, before they approve it. And they may not approve it. So.
Well, that was one problem I had at our last meeting. Because if you look at the survey, that's more what that was leading to as far as I interpreted, not row homes, hired, you know, less density, single-family homes like Tonny Town was. But all they talked about was this high-density, you know, row home stuff is what they were talking about.
So they're.
So I don't know where they got lost from the survey, but apparently they did.
Well, I think they're trying to meet the, the broader objectives of having dwellings available for people of all income levels. But that's, that's a, a different conversation than, than water. But yes, you are right.
Give them a map to Baltimore.
Lower density means less demand.
Okay.
Absolutely. Along here, so, you know, some of the regional alternatives, again, you know, reservoirs, surface water intake may be something that, that we've looked at, that we need to look at. A couple city managers back, the city manager that was here, we actually had in, I believe it may have even made it into one of our capital improvement programs, was a surface water intake. And I'm trying to remember now if it was Pipe Creek that had a base flow sufficient to, to draw from.
That surprised me. Pipe Creek would.
So I'm not sure if it was Pipe Creek or, and I always get that and Bear Run, flip-flop, like which one's the closer one. But. But, you know, creating a small impoundment area, the former city manager didn't wanna use the term reservoir. So I remember him saying, you know, a small water impoundment area, you know, that could be used during summer months to ease up on the demands on the wells. You know, could be looked at. But surface water is more expensive and requires more processing than groundwater typically. So it's, you know, groundwater is the most cost-effective way to provide water at this point. So again, you know, additional groundwater wells, the idea of interconnection between maybe smaller systems, and then, of course, indirect potable reuse, like Westminster is exploring or is pursuing. Again, trying to, you know, diversify the water supply. You know, again, if we were able to have some surface water as a backup, so that, you know, during drought conditions, you know, that we rely on instead of the wells. Water reuse, I think, is probably going to become a more frequent use that we see around the state. Because we're on the wastewater side, there are gonna be nutrient limits that we are not gonna be able to exceed. And I don't see it likely that the Department of the Environment is going to relax any standards. So they're only gonna get stricter, if anything. And, you know, to reduce our effluent from the treatment plant, reuse is a way that could reduce those numbers also. And again, if, you know, again, infrastructure-wise, this would be a challenge. But, you know, shared services, you know, across jurisdictions is something that may be looked at in the future. You know, if there are regional approaches that might be used. So short-term, you know, look at our land use compared to our projected capacity. You know, we wanna be in the driver's seat of well explorations. And we probably, right now, we're in decent shape. But we may want to explore additional wells so that we have, you know, our eggs aren't all in one or two baskets, so to speak. Also having additional wells, while it is a, you know, each well we have, there's another facility to maintain, another facility to operate, you know, more electricity, more pumps to maintain, and so on. But it also gives us operational flexibility. So, you know, we can ease up pumping one well if it looks like it's, you know, showing impacts of, you know, the water levels going down in one well. We could ease up pumping on that and pump another well harder. And if we have additional wells where we're not, like, kinda teetering right at that point as we grow, is gonna be to our advantage. Let's see, and again, longer-term, might be some regional solutions. On the wastewater side, jump right down to, well, Tawnytown's just kinda lumped in with Freedom, Hampstead, and Westminster here. So, you know, additional capacity would be needed for our buildout, like everybody else for the sewer service area. That's SSA. But we, even with all the improvements we've made to the conveyance system, we still see some, you know, increased flows during rain events. So we still have inflow and infiltration to address. So we still lose a substantial amount of capacity to that inflow. The, I just signed off on, or actually, we're looking at manhole rehabilitations for the main sewer interceptor that goes out to the wastewater treatment plant. We've seen a lot of inflows during rain events out there. Even though the interceptor itself is relatively new, the manholes are showing some leakage. So we're going to do a project to line those. So that hopefully will be another kinda, I'll say, low-hanging fruit because a lot of that line is in very wet areas.
The INI repairs, that's in your capital improvement plan, now anyway, right?
I'm not sure if the manhole rehab is or not, but that's been recently, you know, noted that we've got a lot of water coming into those manholes.
My only question is, last week, our INI numbers were good.
They're getting better. They are better than they were, well, much better than we were...
No, I know, I'm not, I'm saying at the meeting last week, when we were going over numbers...
They're decent, but we still lose, we still see increases. And the system's never gonna be perfect, but...
It's a different tone from last week, so that's why I'm seeing where we're actually coming from.
We have cut INI dramatically. I'm not gonna venture a number without looking it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, we have made tremendous progress on it. So in some regard, we are so much better than we were two years ago or three years ago.
I'm just saying that, like I said, at the meeting last week, INI was great, and now INI needs a lot of help, so that's why I'm...
It's, we still, we still...
I'm just seeing which side we're on at the moment because we're getting two different things from two different meetings.
And the numbers in, the numbers that go into this countywide water resource element stopped earlier than some of our projects. So again, you know, it's kinda frustrating to be using these numbers. But there needed to be a stopping point for all the data gathering. And when you're doing it countywide, you know, they wanted like a year-end snapshot. So we kinda locked in at, and I don't even remember now what the term was, but Arrow has gotten, you know, some newer figures, and they've incorporated, I think, some of our more recent projects in their review. But those have been after the cutoff point for this countywide effort. So a lot of progress has been made, still have some room to improve. But again, beyond the INI improvements, everybody's gonna be constrained by, you know, phosphorus and nitrogen. And again, you know, we may end up needing to improve the technology that's used. Power plant, and I think it's on the next slide. Let's see, no. So, just running through, this again, is, shows the additional capacity that would be needed to be developed to meet our ultimate buildout figure. So one hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-two gallons per day.
On all those spaces that aren't in the town yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
And some that's in the town. I mean, there's a couple hundred acres in the city that are not probably...
That was the thing I was seeing last week on the comprehensive plan, is that they had the water way out.
Yes, yes.
And it's like, okay, that's not even our town.
Yeah, and we need to have some conversations about that before we lock anything in with the draft plan.
Are we looking at getting another water tower or not?
That is something that's been talked about currently. We're comfortable with our day-to-day with the two towers, but we would like to have a third for additional fire flows and storage in the event of some catastrophic happening. But I'll turn it over to the water superintendent.
Actually, with our new operating system, we came to realize that the altitude valve that was on the big tank was never working properly probably for the past three years. So now we have more, the water storage was always there, but now we have usable water storage because it's actually working the way it's supposed to, if that makes sense. Like the altitude valve was saying, it was letting it in, but it wasn't letting it come out. So by the time we came up with this new system that I was telling you about, that I have on my phone and stuff, it now, we actually use, they come down together, they go up together. They're synchronized, or they weren't.
Is the standpipe a better source than like a regular water tower? What's the difference between the two?
Basically, the standpipe, as far as I know, that obviously was put in way before I was here. But that was because how it sits down, and they have to match.
Oh.
So that's why that was built so high. It doesn't make sense, but if you go out there and stand on the top of that one, you can, lines up within inches. Another reason to know that, because of the new operating system, the guy did all the measurements and...
Randy, if I'm correct, historically, that water was stored in the standpipe, but it was not flowing into the system as originally planned.
So instead of opening up full, it was only opening up, say, a quarter. Now they're synchronized. If it comes down from that one, they both come down, they both go up. Our well is, when I first started here, run twenty-three hours a day. Now we're fourteen with all the building, so. But once again, with the conservation, don't water your grass.
Yes, yes.
Unless you just planted it, you know?
So the water system has been tightened up, you know, in recent years also. So we're pumping less and serving more homes. So that's pretty cool. So just a couple countywide strategies, you know, you know, keep the, or wastewater strategies. So, you know, keep the current plants up and operational and meeting permit, hopefully. And new public facilities countywide may be good. Here, not so much because both of the watersheds that we drain to end up in the upper monocracy. So we could have two plants, they're flowing to the same place, that has the same nutrient limit. So, you know, unless we employed some new technology, like maybe a membrane technology, which would be much more expensive.
As far as our sludge, does that stay local on the farms or we haul it away somewhere?
We contract with a vendor that hauls it away. It's their responsibility to coordinate with the land application permits.
So now we used to use local farms, we don't do that anymore?
No, no, we do it through a vendor now. We used to be able to spread sludge on the adjacent farm.
Yes, yes.
And there were some others. And, yeah, so now we just outsource it.
Yeah, I was at a meeting about the monocracy. And, yeah, the sludge has become a real issue with the runoff into the creeks and such.
So, yeah, land application is very, very regulated. Again, you know, alternatives for, you know, for the systems countywide, again, INI is an issue for everybody. So, you know, trying to manage that and reduce those numbers. Water reuse, like Westminster's doing, is another option that we may be seeing more in the future. And ultimately, you know, if the city of Tawnytown, you know, desires to grow and we find ourselves being limited by the nutrient levels, you know, for Piney Creek in the upper monocracy, you know, that may be an option that we explore. So now that the state has said you can do it, again, expensive technology, but it's out there. So, you know, at some point, probably whoever's here after me may be in the position of having to, you know, determine, and some future planning commission and mayor and council, you know, are gonna have to determine, you know, do you maintain the status quo and realize, you know, that ultimately you're gonna have to tax people more to generate the revenue to support all the infrastructure maintenance, you know? Or do you figure out a different way to grow? And, you know, what kind of growth do you want that will do a better job of keeping up with the costs of running a city? So, and again, you know, new expanded wastewater treatment plants, maybe throughout the county, probably not in the cards for us, at least not in the foreseeable future. Again, you know, action items, INI reduction again, you know, the idea of sharing equipment and contractors, maybe for some cost efficiencies across jurisdictions is something we could explore. Upgrading the minor treatment plants, we're a major treatment plant. We were upgraded to enhanced nutrient removal. I believe twenty sixteen is when we completed that upgrade at the plant. It did unfortunately take us a couple of years to dial in that new system, and we didn't meet permit for quite a few years after that. You know, we are meeting permit now. We have the last couple of years, in part thanks to the reduction of flows to the plant. But also, you know, exploring the idea of water reuse. You know, you could eventually, you know, get to a zero-discharge scenario. You know, the technology is there, the permitting may not be in place for it. But as we've seen with Westminster, if you can pump it out of your treatment plant and reuse it, could you ultimately not have any effluent going into a water, a body of water? So, you know, theoretically, yeah.
Convince everybody that's okay, though, that's a...
Now, whether, right, whether you can get past that mental hurdle or not is another thing, so. And that may be, you know, I don't know, that may be some of the thought process with MDE's approach of not allowing direct reuse. Again, even though the water that comes out of that Pure Water Westminster facility is cleaner than what comes out of the reservoir, but...
They're doing that at Cranberry, is that where they are?
That's where they'll be putting it, right, putting the water into the reservoir, yeah. At least that's what the pilot did. I know Westminster also has a quarry that they use for emergency. I don't know if the permanent facility may pump to both or just one, but it does need to be indirect, so they can't put it right into their distribution system. So, let's see, I think that's getting pretty close to the end here. So, you know, again, short-term, balance the, you know, demand against the capacity. I think our PFOs do a good job of that. But also, you know, communicating with prospective developments, you know, our current situation as we've been doing for the last couple of years, you know, we don't have capacity for anything big right now. We're working to develop the capacity and recover the capacity on the wastewater side, but we're not there yet. So we're closer on the wastewater side than on the potable water side, though, just because of the lack of recharge. So, you know, longer-term, possible wastewater treatment plant expansion. But again, the nutrient levels are unlikely to be relaxed by the state. So, you know, for us to expand the plant for more capacity, we would probably need to also have better technology to not end up discharging more than so many pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus into the receiving waters. And I don't know what the likelihood of that is in the foreseeable future.
Short-term, certainly, within our control, so.
So, and that's kind of the highlights of it. The plan, the element itself, is a fairly lengthy read. And Dan, you can take my screen down now. But I will get that to you guys to start kinda looking through it. And I wanted to share that with you tonight, just to kinda get you in that water sewer mode a little bit. Because I think that we do, I'm not sure if I should get into this right now or go through, wait for the comprehensive plan discussion, maybe for the next bit. But, you know, I did wanna get this in front of you, just as kind of an overview, so that when you get the actual water resource element, it won't be totally alien to you. But there's gonna be a lot of figures and appendices and stuff like that, so, Dan, you'll love it.
So that was, I mean, the document that we had in our packet here, this came from the county, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So a lot of the information had in there, is it here, but not everything?
Right, right. So the full element is a pretty hefty read. And, you know, up to you how closely you want to, you know, go through all the data that's in there.
I might need you to help me understand it, that's...
Yeah.
Grab me notes.
And frankly, some of it I need people to help me understand, too, so.
I like it.
Shall we move on to the active projects?
Yep, if you're good with that, let's move on.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have much in the way of upgrades or updates. We're still, Arrow has, last I have heard, they believe they found a solution on the sidewalk. They're still vetting the idea on how they can manage the stormwater from the sidewalk that, you know, we hope can stay in the plan. But I don't have a final word on that yet, and I know Lorena is just...
Can you have a plan without the sidewalk?
I'm sorry?
Can you have a plan without the sidewalk?
We can, it would certainly not be my first choice because obviously we try to get sidewalks where we can. And, you know, as the city, we like to try to set the example for others to follow. So if we don't put a sidewalk in for our project... So, if we don't put a sidewalk in for our project, in my opinion, it makes it harder for us to do, you know, to demand a sidewalk from the next project. You know, there, there certainly are places where it would be wonderful to have a sidewalk, but there are just physical challenges that make it impractical. You know, I'll use the example of Trevanian Road, on the Baltimore Street side of the road, when you get past Dunkle Court, there's a slope that comes down, like, pretty much right down to the shoulder of the road. So, okay, well, you could, you know, you cut into that and put a retaining wall there, right? Okay, but then, people have driveways. So, the driveway portion that functions as a sidewalk also needs to be ADA compliant. So, now, you've got a driveway that's, you know, I'll make up a number, 20 degrees, so you need to push it back four feet. Now, you've got a driveway that you can't get a car up and down unless you take the slope, you know, farther into the house, and is that really gonna happen? No. So, I mean, there are areas where, you know, construction of a sidewalk is just very problematic and would be, you know, beyond a reasonable project or expense to, you know, for the city or a homeowner to incur. And, you know, while the park project isn't that kind of a scenario, if the, you know, State Highway Administration, you know, continues to refuse, you know, the little bit of additional flow that would get into their system, and it comes down to, you know, losing about $800,000 in grant money and not doing the project versus doing the project without a sidewalk, we'll probably lose the sidewalk.
So, you have standards, or you don't have standards, right?
Right. Well, and, you know, there, there always are gonna be exceptions, and...
Standards were black and white, we wouldn't need a table up here.
There you go.
Pretty much. And, you know, I, I do think that overall, the city does a good job of, of getting sidewalks installed, you know, where it's, where it's appropriate, and, you know, where it may not be appropriate for a sidewalk to go in today, you know, we've at least gotten easements so that, you know, if conditions change and it becomes more realistic or reasonable to put a sidewalk in, you know, we can go back and do it, albeit, it probably would be at the city's expense at that point.
Without a sidewalk, would that meet the ADA requirement?
So, it would, because there are other routes to, you know...
Not with a sidewalk?
And certainly for, well, there's not sidewalk throughout the whole park now. You know, the park itself is accessible by sidewalk on West Baltimore Street, but the entire park is not accessible with a sidewalk. And, you know, not every part of the park is ADA accessible. So, but if we build a sidewalk, it does need to be. So, yeah, so the jury is still out on that, you know, I'm, I'm really hoping that the engineer at Arrow came up with something that his predecessors didn't think about. But I am getting nervous that it's taking this long to get the, the good news that he worked it out. And in the meantime, the clock is ticking, and, you know, we're getting to the point where we're worried about construction proceeding and completing in time, in time for the grant, window of the grant. So, 'cause we really don't want to lose that funding. Without that funding, the project's dead, so. Nothing new on Storage Today or Tonny Town Supply?
They were gonna go, see that land for sale now?
I did, I heard that.
Yes.
So, no one has reached out to us to say that, that they're pulling the project.
Okay, okay.
But, but I did notice that, yes.
Yes, okay.
Is it that property?
That property.
Is that property, I believe?
I think it's on, I think it's on that side of the access point.
I know, if I was...
Yeah, right. But, but, yeah, there's a sign actually out on Antrim Boulevard, and, yeah, defatta property doesn't come out that far, yeah. Really don't have much to tell you on any of the remaining projects on here. Garnet Ridge and Mountain Brook, last I was in touch with the developer there, they're continuing to work with, with Flowserve on, for Mountain Brook, we, the mayor and I met with the developer, talked through some things. The plan is to go back to Flowserve, try to spin the request for the easement across the property to show them, you know, what Flowserve, you know, how Flowserve can benefit from it. You know, that may include some compensation, because initially, we were hoping they were just gonna give it to us without any compensation. So, you know, there will probably need to be at least some symbolic compensation, you know, if maybe not the full value of the land. But our plan is to meet with the, the plant manager out there and his leadership team, probably virtually, with myself, the mayor, and the developer, to kind of try to talk them into, you know, playing nicely with us on that. So, but until that happens, Mountain Brook Farm is kind of stalled. And Garnet Ridge, you know, they, they are continuing to address comments, but still, still not ready for final approval. Really, those are the only updates I've got for you. I can do my best for any questions you might have, but... Tiffany emailed me earlier today, she does not have an update for you this month.
Okay, next is old business, discussion on the comprehensive plan. If anybody has any comments from their last meeting, I think we're making progress, but...
Just the one I made, but I don't think they're actually following the survey that we had.
Yes, we, I mean, I brought that up also, and I think that, I think we're, we're gonna be getting to the stage where we have to go look at that. I mean, because, yeah, I don't really see the correlation between what the survey said or what I think it said and what we're putting in the paper.
And, and I think that the survey certainly needs to be a, a, I'll say, a tool to help guide us. But there are also things that may be popular, may not best serve the, the community overall in a long-term way. So, I, I think that we, we can't just produce a, a plan that, that like checks every box on, you know, survey said this, okay, we, you know, it, it certainly should be taken into consideration and used as kind of a guidance piece, but, you know, certainly there are other views out there that maybe people didn't do the survey. So, we also need to hear from what the elected officials are saying and what you're hearing from people that you know and interact with. So, it's, it's, you know, the survey is one tool, but it's not the only thing that, that we need to go by.
I'd, I'd say, based on what I've heard, high density is gonna be a hard sell.
So, do you think maybe somebody whispered in the ear about high density, that we need more of that, or...
Well, I think that, I think that needs to be discussed more than we have. We haven't really delved into land use and growth, and, you know, this is our opportunity to look at, you know, not only the water resources element and what that says, you know, as far as capacities, and, and again, you know, from the county's, you know, water resource element, ultimately, you know, they're saying, you know, they're, the numbers crunching shows that there is water to build out the county the way everybody's plans want to, you know, at least in theory. You know, executing that and getting that all permitted could be a completely different thing, though. But for our local plan, we need to be also thinking about, okay, do we, do we want to maintain the same growth footprint? You know, if we're hearing that people don't want a lot of residential growth, maybe that footprint needs to shrink, and now is the time to be having those conversations. And I don't think we've really delved into that very much at this point. You know, we're, we need to...
Like, that would be the main point of the comprehensive plan, though.
Well, and, yeah, and while, you know, while I think the overall goals and objectives, you know, were kind of affirmed, you know, many, many months ago, you know, what that vision looks like, you know, even, even maintaining the same sort of goals, you know, that, that growth area may need to change. You know, but we need to, we need to talk through the consequences of that. You know, for example, if we take a property out of the growth area, it now becomes eligible for agricultural preservation, which is very popular, and this is a priority area in the county for that. So, you know, there are, there have been multiple requests for people to be taken out of the growth area specifically so they can go into ag preservation. We've, we've, I guess, I'll say, a previous iteration of this board, as well as a previous mayor and council, you know, agreed to, and committed to removing a particular part of a parcel from the growth area with the, the next plan update. And the intent was for that property to be able to pursue agricultural preservation. So, we sent a letter to the owner to that effect, to the ag preservation people to that effect. And we also haven't yet really heard from property owners, and, and I do think that should be at the tail end of the process, but we do need to give property owners the opportunity to talk about what they would like to see for their property. So, there may be people that want to be out of the growth area, who may not be aware, even though we've tried to put this out on Tonny Town Connect, and we talk about it in the meetings, and it's on YouTube, and so on, there are still people, I'm sure, that don't know that we're going through this process.
Right.
So, there may be some farmer out there who doesn't want to be in the growth area. We have an area on Fringer Road that is now a tree bank that's in the growth area and has been subdivided since the last plan. Maybe that shouldn't be in the growth area anymore, you know, so we, we need to have these conversations, you know, before we lock in too much, you know...
So, yeah, my, my biggest problem was the lack of specificity in the, in the housing section that we went over this past week, especially when you compared it with the, with the water, the water section that was...
Yeah.
Engineer Dream versus, we want to do this warm and fuzzy thing in the, in the, in the housing. Because we've got, we've got some other issues that we really need to be looking at before we, especially on the other side of 194, put a bunch of high-density type stuff, or higher density.
I think the, where I struggle with, when we talk about the, the housing, is the, somehow, whenever you talk about affordable housing, all of a sudden, it means high density. And I don't think that necessarily needs to be the case, and, so I have, I have a problem with that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, just because I have a quarter acre house doesn't mean I need, I mean, quarter acre lot, it doesn't mean I have to fill it up with house.
Right. And, you know, and that's, those are conversations that we need to be having, you know, as part of this process. And things like zoning code limitations and restrictions, you know, may be something that we need to think about, too. So, in our 10,000, you need to meet a certain minimum square footage. You know, you can't build a, you know, a really small house. Now, that small house could be more affordable for people, and maybe they would want to add on to it, you know, as they were able, or as their family grew, and they would have the, you know, the 10,000 square foot lot to do that. But again, you know, there's, there's the cost of maintaining and replacing infrastructure that the city does in perpetuity. So, you know, there's also that part of the equation that if you do opt for a lower-density growth pattern, ultimately, I believe your, your taxing structure is gonna have to change, because you're not gonna make the revenue to be able to replace that infrastructure when it ultimately fails, based on your typical R10,000, even with your, you know, 2,000, 3,000 square foot home. You know, it's, it's, and, and it's, it's, you know, to really delve into it, you know, we could, we could hire somebody to really crunch all those numbers and look at everybody's income and, and do all that. But, you know, again, those, there are, for every growth-related decision you make, there are consequences, you know, for future mayors and councils and, and residents that, you know, we need to be thinking about also. So, you know, while the survey may say, you know, and getting back to Barry's comment from Tuesday night, you know, brick houses, one acre lots...
Brick houses on one acre lots.
You know? That's great, and if that's what everybody wants, we can do that, but there's gonna be a cost associated with it. And what we never seem to do a good job with is having the conversation about the cost along with the conversation of what people want. And we, we always seem to split that, you know, we always talk about...
Well, but isn't it a trade-off, though?
Give the people what they want, but then, when they find out the cost, you know, they're gonna be unhappy. So, we need to roll that into the same conversation.
But, but isn't it a trade-off? If you put in a, a bunch of more high-density, you're gonna have to up the treatment, up the wastewater, of the, all of the backend infrastructure's gonna have to get updated, even if you're laying less pipe, necessarily. But if it's spread out, okay, yeah, you've got pipe that, that's going between houses, but you're not having to build out your backend infrastructure quite as much, so it seems like it's a...
Well, yeah, and again, it's, you know...
That's where the give and take is.
And, to a degree, and you, you went someplace different than what I, where I thought you were gonna go. So, for water and sewer, you know, we would collect more money based on the usage, right? So, we have more money to pay for more electricity, for more wear and tear on the pumps, and so on. What we don't necessarily get that's as directly correlated to the demand is, what about police services? What about parks and recreation? What about, you know, playing fields for people? You know, those are things that, that are kind of expected services from the city as well.
Yeah, but higher density, I think you need more police and you need more parks.
Right.
So, the bigger brick house, that would all come down.
Right, right.
That's a trade-off for the less pipes.
So, you spend less to develop more capacity, you spend less on police protection...
It'll work, it'll work.
But, right, but you spend proportionally more on infrastructure, and that's okay. But you need to have the conversation about the pros and cons of it, that's all.
Have a question from the audience?
Yep, yeah. Sorry, Chris.
Good evening, everyone, Chris Tillman. You all know who I am. So, I think there's a, a bit of a confusing thing, and I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. You know, when you talk about density on, whether that's for Soul's Farm, or whether that's for Mountain Branch, or wherever, that's under the community village overlay, where you would then create townhouses. But in terms of number of units, that doesn't change. So, if there's, you know, 300 units allowed on this piece of property, whether those units are crammed into a, you know, half of those units are, are crammed into townhouses and the other half are single-family, or whether they're all single families on quarter-acre lots, it's, the number of houses, it's the same. So, it's not, the demand on, on water and sewer is still the same. The issue is, like, like Jim was bringing up, is when you put them out on quarter-acre lots, now you have more infrastructure and more infrastructure maintenance costs on that sprout out of, over the same number of houses, whereas you, if you have some measure of them, and, and I'm not advocating one way or the other on that, I mean, that's, that's for you all to decide, but I just want to make sure that we all understand that it doesn't, the number of units doesn't change, it's still...
But physically, it has to.
No.
No.
The number of units stays the same.
Number of units doesn't change, because that's what...
If you've got bigger plot, if you've got bigger lots, you've got...
What you end up with is open space, Harry, that, that's what the trade-off is with the community village. So, you end up with much more open space...
But that's a different unit number.
No, it doesn't change.
If it's 100 acres, you can put so many houses on there. Community villages allows you to support them together for a higher density in a certain area.
Yes, but, but the total number doesn't change.
But what I think we're talking about is what was at, what happened at last Tuesday's meeting, where they were talking much more on the higher-density side than even just the townhouses.
Well, and the question is, where, you know, where, where would that go? Because I think that there's a lot of, and then we, this, we could have this discussion infinitum, but I, I think that there are infill developments that could be done much closer into the downtown. You know, that's not something, I wouldn't want to go put, you know, 300 townhouses out on, out on, on, on a piece of parcel out away from the center of town. If you want... If you want to create that kind of environment, you want to create that environment closer to the downtown.
Well, I'm ju, the way it was presented last week is different from the idealized version that, that we've gotten in other, in other...
And, and unfortunately, I, I wasn't here last week, so I don't, I don't know where all was presented.
That's kind of, that's kind of where, where, where I'm coming from. Um, and also, I mean, yeah, if, if you say 300 houses, and then that, that just gives you more green space, it, I guess, in between, or in, in larger chunks?
Around, yeah.
So, they have a, you have your 100 acres, you can't build houses on some of it because it's swampland, so they squish all the houses together, and you have the same number of houses, but you have, they're closer together. I call that a higher density, because they're closer together.
Yeah. Um, but, uh, but also, I mean, it just, some of the problem that was coming in la, last week was, again, the vague, vagueness...
I'll have to watch the recording.
Yeah, the va, the vagueness of the terms, um, the shift in priorities from what it seemed like the people actually wanted. Um, that's, that was, that seemed to be where, where a lot of the contention is coming in right now.
And also, you have to understand that there are priorities being driven by the state that are vastly different from what, what the results of the survey told us. And as much as we would like to give people what the results of the survey told us, we may not be able to actually do that. But that's, again, and that goes, uh, that's a, a whole nother reading level up here that I haven't delved completely into. I'm just kind of paying attention to these things as I go to the, um, you know, to go to conferences and try to absorb some of this. But I think that it's, um, we want to make sure that we're, we're, when we're having the discussion, we're having the discussion about the same thing. So, um, the question, the other question I have, uh, I don't know, was the, were the key person interviews ever conducted?
No, they're not complete yet.
And here we're coming to the end of this process, and this still isn't done. This was something that was supposed to have been done, you know...
It was the Christmas holidays.
Yes, yep. So, I just, I'm, have some concerns there, because we haven't talked to those people, and just like, like Jim was saying a little while ago, we haven't talked to some of these landowners that are out in the designated growth areas that may want to, um, put farmland in preservation, you know, we haven't talked to them either, you know?
I, I'm kind of concerned we're coming to the end, and we're just now talking about growth and, uh, and use. That seems like that would be one of the priorities.
No, there's a lot, there's a lot of elements in there.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've been talking about, well, a fair amount of that, but...
One of the biggest problems, I think, we have to look at the formula that they're using. If they have 100 acres, that's not, and that's what they try to develop, and that's the formula they use. But it, you have to go by usable ground, because it might only have 50 acres that's actually usable.
But that's not what our code says.
That's not where it's written.
Well, I know, that needs to be changed.
Well, and, and that's, and that's perfectly fine, I mean, that, you know, that's what we want to do as a town, that's a great thing to do, but that's not what the code says.
I know. That's what I think needs to be looked at and changed, because I don't think it's right to count their ponds and their swamp ground as usable ground. They give it to us to make parks in, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not making a value judgment one way or the other, I'm just saying that's not the case.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you need to look at that code. That's be usable ground, not what your acreage is.
Thanks, all.
Talk to your councilman.
I'm trying to, we got a couple here.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments on, uh, comprehensive plan this evening? Okay, the next, uh, I guess we just have other business. So, uh, Mr. Parker wanted me to, uh, let everybody know that we, both Jim and I went to the Citizens Planning Academy, uh, which was put on by the, uh, the county. It was, uh, one night a week for eight weeks. It was very, very interesting, and I'd recommend anybody that gets an opportunity to do it, it would, uh, it would be, uh, it would be good. So, so Jim's been doing it for a long time, uh, he still enjoyed it and, uh, learned a few things, and the, the conversation that we had with the people that were there was, uh, is quite interesting, so... That's all I got. Any, uh, any other comments from...
I'm good. I've blathered around tonight.
All right, um, look for a motion for adjournment, then?
Sure.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you very much. Oh.
[laughing]